Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen from Monday, January 7th, to order if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment this evening? Anybody that wants to speak in public comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to a presentation this evening, an update on the Old Town Hall Homes redevelopment project, and we have the Darien Housing Authority Chairman, Mr. Joe Warren, with us this evening. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening.
Have you recovered from your holiday activities?
I will be very honest with you. It takes a while to get back down to earth again. It was, it was an awful lot of fun and hugely successful. We raised a bunch of money for the Darien, for the Narroton Fire Department, so it was a win-win for everybody.
Good. Well, thank you for being here to talk to us about the redevelopment project. We're very excited. It seems to be gaining momentum.
Well, let me tell you where we're at. We have successfully relocated all of our existing tenants, and the majority of them are relocated here in Darien. I don't have an exact count, but I think the numbers are. We put, we had originally 22 residents to relocate. That number has declined by two. We had two residents who have since passed away since we started this whole process. The remainder, I believe four residents were relocated on Hope Street in Stanford. Two residents were relocated in Norwalk. One went to Maine to be with family, and one went to Rhode Island to be with family. Everybody else has been relocated here in town, and it's a credit to our staff that they found that number of accessible. You remember, these are seniors, so we couldn't just look at any apartment. We had to be very specific as to what we were looking for. The apartments that are currently being rented were all put on a one-year lease with the intention, with the agreement to the individual landlords that those leases would be extended month to month based on whatever the actual end date of the construction is. We know this thing's going to take about 18 months, so we locked it in for a year with the ability to go month to month after that. The Darien Housing Authority put together a budget along with our development partners, and included in that budget was money to cover the cost of the relocation. The way this works is the tenants continue to pay their existing rent to the Darien Housing Authority. Wherever they were relocated to, the Housing Authority picks up the cost of any security deposit that was necessary and any increment in rent because we're now putting them in market-rate facilities. So we pick up the difference, and the expectation is that at the end of the, you know, when the project is completed, we begin to move our tenants back in, we will recover the vast majority of the security deposits. We don't expect to have much of that. But we are, in fact, slightly under budget for that whole process, given what the increment was in the apartments that we found and the way everything worked out. We are slightly under budget, so that's a, that's a very good sign. The next major step for us is financing. All the financing is technically in place. That is, we have commitments from the state, from CHAF, from DCD, all the different organizations that are going to provide money. A portion of the money will come from bonds. We'll sell bonds. Now, what we've done, when we did, when we redid the Heights, we allowed the state through the CHAF, through the Connecticut Housing Authority, to sell the bonds. We have decided this time, because the law allows us to do it, that we will sell the bonds ourselves. The logic behind this is that whenever you do this type of a bonding issue, there are fees involved, and by doing it ourselves, the fees will actually go back, return to the project. Now, what we'll do sometime in the not-too-distant future, we won't do it right away, but sometime in the next couple of months, we'll make a determination of what those fees are going to be and make a decision on how much of the, we are a co-develop, the Housing Authority is a co-developer. The development agreement calls for the, all the co-developers to share in any monies that return to the project, so in this case, the fee would be shared by the co-developers. What we will do is make a determination of how much of that money we will immediately put back into the Housing Authority Reserve Fund and how much will go back to the project. The intention is if the project stays on budget, and we're all very confident that it will, then ultimately, all of that fee comes back to the Housing Authority. But for the duration of the project, we'll keep it available to the project in the event there's something comes up unexpected, and we'll have the ability to do that. There's a couple of things we're going to ask you folks to help us with. Jamie, you specifically will be required to sign a document indicating that, in fact, we have, by law, we must hold a public hearing relative to the bond issue. That hearing is scheduled for January 22nd at 7:30 at the Heights. We were originally going to hold it here at Town Hall. On January 22nd, there is no room available at Town Hall.
Yeah, there's a Congressman Himes will be here in Town Hall having his.
Everything's going on that night. That include, we looked also at the senior center to see if there was any rooms there. There's, there's nothing available. So our regular schedule, we were going to do it the 22nd because that's our regular scheduled meeting. Had we moved it to Town Hall, it would have then become a special meeting. We're going to keep it at the Heights. We'll do the public hearing at the Heights. There's no reason not to do that. We'll start our meeting at 6:30. We'll interrupt at 7:30. We put the public hearing at 7:30 to allow any commuters time to get off the train and get to the meeting. We're not taking this lightly. This is a legal requirement, but we are taking it seriously. The expectation is that if we get three people coming to a bond hearing, that's a mob scene. These types of hearings generally do not attract a crowd. There's nothing, we're going to bond. Somebody can express an opinion whether they think we're out of our minds or not, but the money, the bonds are going to be sold, whether we sell them, whether the state sells them, they're going to be sold. What we've posted the meeting for is to discuss the sale of $12 million in bonds. We expect to sell 10 million, but we're posting for 12 so that we've got a little wiggle room later on if we, if we needed an additional, some additional funding. So anyway, we'll interrupt the regular meeting, have the bond hearing. Typically, for these types of hearings, you wait 15 minutes. If nobody shows up, you end the hearing and you get on with your business. But by doing it at the same time we're doing a regular meeting, because it is a regular meeting, if something comes up in the bond hearing, we can add it to the agenda of the regular meeting without any problem and take care of it right away. So we're pretty comfortable that we're moving ahead of pace to get these things done. The other thing, we're going to come back to you with some paperwork farther down the road in the next month or so. We will be relocating the monument and the flagpole that is currently out in front of Old Town Hall Houses. We have talked to monuments and ceremonies, and they have no use for it. There is nobody on that monument who is not recognized on at least one other monument in the town, either the one here or the one up at the VFW. There are a number of monuments in town, and all the people that are recognized on the one in front of Old Town Houses are recognized elsewhere. So monuments and ceremonies has no need for us to keep that monument there. In fact, the VFW had agreed they would take the monument. They didn't want the flagpole. We've made arrangements to move the whole thing, flagpole and all, over to Spring Grove Cemetery, and it will be located, right now, if you stand on the post road and look towards Spring Grove, you'll see the monument across from the police department where the, the four services are represented in that flagpole. And then on the other side of the cemetery is the fireman's monument and that flagpole, and this thing will go roughly halfway in between those two alongside the hill. There's a base already set for it. We've made arrangements to get it moved, and we'll take care of doing that. But that monument is mentioned in the deed to the property as a monument that must be maintained, so we're going to need you guys to sign off on the fact that we're going to move it because it just doesn't, there's really no place for it once the new building is built, and there's no need for it anymore because all the people that are being memorialized have been memorialized elsewhere. We didn't want to get rid of it, so we have an opportunity to keep the whole thing. We'll just come to you with some paperwork, asking you to sign off on the fact that we've moved it to an appropriate location.
Joe, will you have a flagpole in the new, with the new development?
We'll have a flag at the new development. It won't, it won't have a monument, so that it won't, it won't have those types of requirements. It'll just be a flag. But yes, we will maintain a flag at that facility. Beyond that, we're getting ready now. We'll start gearing up as soon as we get all the rest of this paperwork cleared up to begin demolition. We've closed the facility. We've turned off all the water. We've turned off, the only power that's left over there is that necessary to keep the place lit at night so that it's not completely dark. So we're getting ready, we're getting close to starting demolition. We don't have an actual start date yet until all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed. We have to finish all the necessary paperwork, but we're right on schedule. We're actually a little bit ahead of schedule, and it is our intention to try to keep a little bit ahead of schedule if we can. Beyond that, I don't know what else I can tell you. We're, we're ready to go. And of course, all the plans have been approved. Planning and zoning's given us everything we need. We'll start pulling permits as we need them. We'll do it, the financing will be done in two pieces so that we can start the demolition right away, and then we'll finance the construction portion of it. And again, that's not because there's a problem or an issue. It's just to keep, we gained a little time by relocating everybody. We want to keep that edge, and if we wait till everything is ready, we'd be right back on schedule again. And rather than do that, we can go ahead and finance the demolition part first and then finance the rest of it while we're doing the demolition and keep ourselves a little bit ahead of schedule. So that's where we're at.
Great. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
So are you, with, you know, demolition will certainly perk up the neighbors, and we want to make sure that the neighbors are being fully updated on the schedule of the project. Is that something the Housing Authority is doing?
When we get a date, when we have a date to begin actual work, when, when things are going to start arriving on site, we will notify everybody that we can. We'll put it in the paper. The papers have already been contacting me to get information as it becomes available, and as soon as it does become available, we'll let them know so that we can publish it. We'll obviously post it on our website. I don't know what the plan is relative to individual notifications of the neighbors, but trust me, this is not, we're not going to come sneak in at night and start, all of a sudden, they'll wake up in the morning and there'll be trucks all over the place. We'll give everybody as much lead time as we possibly can on what's going on. As part of the agreement with planning and zoning, we will not use Academy Street as an entrance for construction work. All the construction work will come in from the post road through the main entrance, which, by the way, brings me to another point. You people need to be aware that that driveway now becomes part of a construction site, and we'll have to look at what impact that has on the paramedic, on three, unit 310, because 310 uses that entrance to get the ambulance in and out.
Right.
And once we begin that as a construction site, there is absolutely no way to guarantee that that entrance will be clear and usable 24/7.
Well, I think we're going to have to work on that because that's, it's imperative that they have access to, to move on and off that property at all times. We don't really have an alternative to, to build an auxiliary parking area for them. As you know, they need to keep their fly car charged with electricity, so we can't just move them out onto the street, for example. So we will have to work closely with you on that.
I understand. You need to understand, this is a construction site. If a delivery comes and there are things moving in and out of that because of the requirement that we cannot use any other entrance to the site, we're just letting everybody know, we need to coordinate what's going on here.
So we can, we can talk about this offline, certainly, but you know that the building that houses the paramedics has, along with it, several parking spaces, so.
And when the project is completed, you will continue to have those spaces. That's all put, been done as part of the project. We are simply notifying you that we can't guarantee that that alarm goes off, there won't be a truck pulling in that driveway delivering materials to the construction site, and that's an issue that has to be resolved.
Yes, I would, I would encourage talks to begin with Post 53 and SEMs on that very issue and with the developer to, you know, really work out the protocols on that.
We, we will not address that at the meeting of the 22nd, but we will address it at the February meeting. We'll put it on our agenda specifically.
Perfect.
So that we can address that.
My, my last question before, well, two questions. One for you, Joe. When do you anticipate coming to the town for release of the Affordable Housing Trust fund money?
I'll know better after our meeting on the 22nd.
Okay. Okay. And then this really is maybe a question for the both of you, Kate and you. Has the Housing Authority ever issued bonds before?
No.
First time?
Yes.
And so then my question to you, Kate, is as an agency of the town of Darien, their bonding, does it impact us in any way in terms of debt outstanding, any town liabilities, et cetera?
They're an agency of the state, and as such, I would think not.
Okay.
But even if they did come under our debt limit.
Yep.
We have such capacity that it would not impact our ability to issue debt.
So I'd love to try and be very clear, you know, get opinions on that relationship, that financial relationship between the Housing Authority and the town of Darien, and make sure that we have somebody from the Board of Finance who is brought into these discussions so they at least know that we've talked about it and we've made sure that there are no unintended consequences.
Just to, to add one more layer to that, we are using Wayne Fox as our attorney to handle this, and we'll be using Marie Phelan as bond counsel. These are parties that have, the town has used.
Marie is our bond counsel as well.
So we're, we're trying to do this in a way that we've coordinated the people we're using. Even though the Housing Authority is a state agency, we're using the same people the town would use to ensure that we don't have a conflict here.
That's great.
That we're not doing something that.
Then we should be able to get our answers read.
Yeah, we, we know who the players are. We've, these are people that have been involved with the town before. We did it that way specifically so we wouldn't have that kind of an issue.
Great. And my last question, what is the total project budget?
I don't have an exact number. It's about 24 million.
Okay.
Somewhere in the 20 to 24 million dollar range. And we can get you a complete, but the budget is available. We can get you a copy of the complete budget and show you exactly how it breaks up.
Okay.
But that's the, that's the range we're talking about. And the, and the money comes, it's a combination of, there's some grant money coming in, there's some low-income housing tax credits that go into it, there's the bonding money that goes into it, and, and all of that's in place. We know already, although we, the bonds have not been put up for sale, we know who's going to buy them. We know who's going to buy the low-income housing tax credits. That's all been done already, and so we're not going into this saying, okay, starting tomorrow, we start scrambling around it. We know how the money's coming in, who's, where it's coming from. We know exactly where it's all coming from. That's all been taken care of.
Mark.
Remind me, Joe, how many units?
When we're done, 55. 53 single-bedroom and two two-bedroom. The two-bedroom, we put in the plan because physically it fit because of other things we had to put in the building, like a computer room and a common room. There was a little extra space on this second floor, and there was not enough room to put in another total apartment, so we opted to put two two-bedroom apartments in. That gives us the flexibility, if we need somebody that has a full-time aide, we can accommodate that. We can use those extra two apartments to do, give us some flexibility.
Will you be using any of the apartments to accommodate an onsite supervisor or maintenance person?
It is not our intention to do that. The intention is that these apartments are for the elderly, and they will be exclusively rented that way. The, we'll continue to maintain, we, we have a contract with Imagineers to do the management for both the Heights and Old Town Hall Houses. There is a office space available at Old Town Hall Houses in the new plan, and we will have somebody come there at regular intervals during the week to deal with onsite issues. Otherwise, it'll be a phone call. And maintenance is done the same way. We have somebody to do maintenance. They'll be there, you know. That's the way we did it in the existing facility. We continue, we will continue to do that in the facility.
Is it still going to be called Old Town Hall Homes?
Probably not.
Okay.
There, there's been nothing formal. It's not on the agenda yet, but there've been preliminary discussions that the time has come to change the name.
Okay.
There, there's not a lot of people around who actually know why it's called Old Town Hall Houses, so we'll, we'll take this opportunity to, just as we did with the Heights.
Right.
We'll take this opportunity to review. We'll want, we'll want the site to reflect what the origin was and where this all came from, but we'll want to find a name that's more appropriate.
Okay.
And keep in mind, that site before it was Town Hall, was Royal School. So we might even go back that far in history to when we start looking at.
Go back in time.
I'm just saying, we've, we've begun some behind-the-scenes discussions. We're not.
Yep. So before we get to this, one last question. In, in the best-case basis, if all goes as you're planning at the moment with the financing and construction, when do you anticipate that you would have everybody moved back in?
Spring of 2020.
Okay. In time for our bicentennial celebration?
We, we'd like to, you know.
Okay.
I mean, it's an ambitious schedule. Anytime you're doing this kind of construction, it's ambitious, but again, as of right now, everything's going reasonably smoothly.
But you are also sort of required to file, follow a certain schedule, right? When you take state funding for things, don't they put a, you've got a timeframe limitation?
Jamie, with all due respect, and I'm not trying to be flip here, but if, if we adhered to the state's schedule, I'd be more likely to be telling you somewhere in 2023. The, the flexibility in the state scheduling is dramatic enough, we're not even looking at that. If we can't get better than what the requirements are for using the, for the timing for using the money, dispersing the money, et cetera.
Great. That's all I need to know.
Then we're, we have a serious problem.
Perfect.
That's not our intention.
Susan.
My question kind of relates to the state, and not that I want to be pessimistic by any means, but when you say the funding is all in place and the grants are all in place, I know there's never a guarantee, 100% guarantee, but are things in writing and things are, I mean.
Yes, it's been voted. We've got the documentation. It's all.
There's no way they're going to pull the rug out from under you guys.
They have a commitment, you have a commitment to fund.
That's correct.
Okay.
Could something go wrong at the last minute? Absolutely. Do we have contingencies in place to deal with that if it happens? Absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, great. I, I figured that, but it's good to hear that publicly.
Everything is absolutely guaranteed, cast in concrete, unless I wake up tomorrow morning and somebody tells me different, and if that's the case, Plan B. We're not, you know, we're comfortable where we are and what we're doing here then.
Okay.
By, by everybody's standards, this is a big deal to us. By everybody else's standards, this is a very small project, so, you know, we're just a little ripple.
It's a big deal to the town.
It's a huge deal.
It's an important project.
It's a, it's a very important project.
Yeah.
And for the, for the Housing Authority, this is a, you know, bonding it ourselves. We're doing some things that we've not done before, and that's a big step for us. But again, you have to look at it in the overall context, in the overall context. This is, by state standards, a relatively small project, so we're not looking for any put in, throw a monkey wrench into it. We'll let, immediately, when I hear, you'll hear. I'm not.
Okay. Any other board questions about the project update?
Sounds good.
No? One last thing before you go, Joe. We need a new commissioner for the Housing Authority.
Yes, we do. The sooner the better.
Okay. And so, you know, I certainly welcome your input. If there've been people who've shown an interest, please give me a call, and we'll get that moving.
I will, absolutely.
Actually, one question about that. Looking at who's on the commission right now, is there any skill set that would be a huge help at this point as people are thinking about possibly joining?
There really isn't. What we're looking for is somebody who's willing to put in the time and somebody who's willing to recognize that this is not a personal endeavor, this is a town project, and the number-one requirement is that we need somebody who's a team player. The hardest thing to understand about being on the Housing Authority is the Housing Authority does not manage the Heights nor Old Town Hall Houses. We hire a company to do that, and the worst thing we could do is, as members of the Housing Authority, try to micromanage those projects. We need to deal with the big, the policy issues. We need to make sure that the management company is fulfilling their responsibility. We need to review on a routine basis what the management company is doing. We need to review the interface between the management company and the residents, but we can't allow ourselves to get pulled into, as has happened years and years ago, where the members of the Housing Authority were dealing directly with the residents. Now, that's not to say that we don't talk to residents and that we don't have personal interest in the residents. I have friends who live in both places, and certainly, they talk to me. But when it comes to resolving an issue, I have to take a step back and make sure that the management company resolves the issue, because if I begin to start trying to resolve issues on my own, and that's what any new member has to understand, their friends are going to, the type of things that happen, friends will call because they have relatives who want to get into Old Town Hall Houses. How do I get on the list? You don't. If the list is closed, the list is closed. The fact that you know somebody who's on the Housing Authority is interesting, but completely beside the point. The management company makes a determination based on how many people are on the list and what the turnover rate is when lists are reopened.
Okay.
It's, you know, so you have to, that's what we're looking, we're looking for a team player.
Great.
And somebody who understands truly what the role of a commissioner is.
Okay. I know that the individual that has stepped off is a lawyer, so, you know, sometimes those skills come handy, but I'll make a public plea for anybody that's watching.
Yeah, anybody.
If you're interested in considering joining the Darien Housing Authority, please contact the First Selectmen's Office.
We're not too hard to get along with. We're pretty easygoing. But, and, and yes, the person going off was a lawyer. We have, we hire a lawyer. Yes, we'll, if we have a lawyer on board, we'll turn to that person and say, what questions should we ask? But we cannot turn to the, a lawyer on the housing, who's a commissioner, and ask for legal advice.
Oh, I understand.
That gets you in trouble. You need to go, you've hired a lawyer, you have to go to that lawyer and get the official legal advice.
Okay.
A lawyer certainly helps you phrase the question properly, but you've got to ask the question of the guy you hired.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate that you came tonight with the update, Joe. Thank you very much.
No problem. You guys have any questions, anytime. Don't hesitate. Give us a buzz.
Okay, thanks. Okay. First Selectmen's report is very brief. Want to, again, wish everybody a very happy New Year. Hope you had a great holiday season. I don't want to steal Kate's thunder, but we are in the throes of budget season. We are all looking forward to having a very positive and productive 2019. It's a really exciting year for stuff happening in Darien, so looking forward to that. We have a solar installation project going on, on the top of Town Hall right now, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall you said that by spring, the PD, Town Hall, and the Town Garage will have solar installations that will be active by the spring, correct?
If not, sorry.
Great. Interviews have been completed, and we're close to awarding a contract for the feasibility study and preliminary design concepts for the Narroton Heights Rail Station building, station parking areas, and access points, so we're very excited about that. And on Wednesday, Governor-elect Lamont gets sworn into office, and I'll be attending his inaugural address to the legislature to really try and get a feel for what we as a small town can expect from the governor, and I want to wish him and his administration very well as they try and tackle the state's challenges. Kate.
As Jamie said, we're deep into budget, meeting with all the department heads, reviewing their budgets. We, I think it's going to be a little challenging. We've had requests for new personnel, and it's a hard time to be increasing costs, but I think some of them have. But I think some of them have merit and I will be, I expect to be proposing some of them, but probably not all. And there'll be some significant capital requests coming along as well. But I think our department heads have done their best to heed your direction to try and keep any increases to a minimum. And other than that, it is waiting list renewal time for the parking, parking permits. So you've got until the end of the month to renew your spot on the waiting list. And we will probably put out signs towards the end of the month to remind people. But now's the time.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. We have one transfer this evening. It's for $25,000 to be transferred from capital contingency to a new account. And we have Ed Gentile, Public Works Director, and we have Chief Ray Osborne here this evening to explain this transfer to us.
Good evening. Ed Gentile, Director of Public Works, Chief Osborne, Darien Police Department. In front of you, you have a request for a transfer for the $25,000, as the First Selectman has mentioned. Just to go over briefly what is entailed in the transfer and what we're going to get for the $25,000, and along with a little bit of background from Chief Osborne, I'll hopefully give you a flavor of what's been going on in the building and what our goals are here by hiring this consultant to bring them in, to bring him in through this building to see if he can rectify a lot of these issues. The consultant we're bringing in will be, be contracted to investigate a lot of the issues over at the PD. Right now, we have some high humidity issues. We have issues with pressurization in the building, causing some environmental issues in there for, for the staff. We currently have also some issues with energy usage. We are heating and cooling the building during the summertime at the same time, which, which should not be happening. But it's a way to keep the humidity down. So with that said, there's, there, in my opinion, there's, there's got to be a better way in interviewing this consultant, who came highly recommended from one of our neighboring towns. I did a little bit of background check on him. He also came recommended from Eversource, who we had brought in about nine months ago to do some recommissioning. And recommissioning is basically going back in and seeing where we could be better with energy efficiency. Okay, now that you're in the building, let's find out the way you use it. Can we turn lights off sooner? Can we turn off heat or cooling to certain areas? Do we need to turn it on at night to, to warm up the building? I mean, those, those things are particular, particularly necessary in a police department that runs 24/7, 365. So we got a, a good young man. His, the name of the company is SEC, Sustainable Engineering Solutions. They're out of Berlin. He has done a ton of work in our neighboring town of Stanford. He has done quite a bit of their schools for the retrocommissioning. This is where they bring him in to diagnose problems. This is what he does. This is his, he's the principal in the company. And just to, I, I'm going to let Ray speak a little bit, just to give you a flavor of what's going on. And then I'll go into what we're going to get out of report. We won't belabor it, but I want you to understand what we're going to get. But I think Ray could give you a little bit of a taste of what we're, he's going through over there, if you would.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Ed. First, let me thank Ed for, for getting involved in this with us. We, we've had a number of issues for a couple of years now. And it's beyond the level of expertise of me and my staff. And Ed's been great jumping in, helping us, and Dave Zabini as well. What we've experienced, and it's this past summer, it really came to a head, is, as Ed was saying, pressurization issues, high humidity, the condensation coming through the ceiling, water drips throughout the building were a real problem this past summer. You know, stained ceiling tiles, to the point where we were getting mold in the locker rooms, female locker rooms, male locker rooms, our booking area. We had to have a company come in and do an air quality test because of concerns of the, the union, of the, the quality of the air that they were breathing, justifiably so. It, it became a real, real problem, and we just couldn't get ahead, couldn't get a grip on it. And that's when we, when we called Ed and asked for advice, and he came up with these, what we think are really good solutions. And that's why I'm here today.
This building, I think we all remember back in 2012, I think is when they, they finished in early 13. This book right here, I brought it with me tonight. This is the final commissioning report that was done for that building. A lot of the recommendations from what we could see and what our consultants picked out weren't actually implemented or implemented in total. So that may or may not have contributed to some of the problems that we're having now. I don't think anyone foresaw the pressurization issue. Basically, because of the way we're drafting air through the building to circulate it, we're basically sucking the air through the windows and through the brick and mortar. That's how hard it was sucking the air into the building, causing mold to build up on the back of the wallpaper in the chief's office and the two captains' offices. So the older part of the building was having that most of, most of that problem. Not, not the newer part, I think, Susan. I think that you're going to go next.
Could you just answer my question?
What we have found in the newer part of the building is workmanship issues with plumbing. We've, we've had to address numerous times now, I'd say numerous as in four or five leaks in the cooling and, or the heating system, where we've had to go actually shut the building down over the weekend, drain the system down, the whole building, re-solder the pipes, then, and then actually pump this, the, the cooling back into the building that they use for heating. So these are all problems that are, are coming up. But the, I think the chief hit it on the head, having the con, the, the duck work in the building sweating and having the water dripping through them, that I think kind of is telling us something's really wrong in that building and we need somebody to actually give us a, a hand figuring out what that is. Now, part of this report, there are three phases that we've contracted for, or will contract for, but have in the proposal. There's, of course, the planning phase at the beginning, what we're going to attempt to do. That'll bring the, the stakeholders involved. There's investigative phase. Ernie Laws is the principal. He is the, the lead for this project. He's been in the building already. He's been through the entire building. He will come down with these guys and go through it even more intensely. And then finally, there's a reporting phase. This, these three phases will take three to four months to do. I think by the time we get a contract, everything, we'll be hitting this at the, at the right time, in my opinion. Maybe February, March, which will take us from a heating season into a cooling season. And it'll give us both aspects. And maybe even if I push it a little bit, we'll get into the warmer part of the summer, just as it starts, just to make sure the AC systems are doing what they're supposed to do. So we're, we're looking at a broad range of temperature outside the building that the inside of the building's going to need to match somehow. And the challenge usually is with your, with your heating systems or your cooling systems, moving air through your building and drawing air from outside to do that and correcting the temperature wherein you're pulling air from the outside. And that's where I think a lot of our problems are, and that's kind of Ernie agreed with me on that. Right now, just trying to balance that part of it will get the duck work in the building back to where it should be. And that's, has to do with some of our mechanical systems. Part of the reporting phase, which is the last phase, will include a preliminary estimate for those recommendations that he comes up with. He has contracted with, for a small fee, another company that he uses on a regular basis to do that cost estimating, so that we have some budgetary numbers when we're done with the report to come back to, to you folks with if, if there's transfers to be made or through the budget process. Having a good, solid number to look at moving forward. So I just, and I just want to touch on one more topic. We had about nine months ago, sat down with Eversource to go in and do this recommissioning, which, you know, trying to pick up on some additional cost savings through energy. When we stepped away and figured we needed to take a look at the building and get the building right first before going after energy savings, Eversource was a little shy to participate. When I said participate in, they were willing to put money up to do the study and to do some of the hard cost changes in the building. They weren't, they're not going to do that now. But with us using SEC, which they were on Eversource's recommendation list to us, they will come back later after we have the list of recommendations and most likely, from what they've told me, participate in any energy cost-saving improvements that we do. So if in the recommendations it is to, to make a change to this equipment and it's going to save energy, they will help and participate in that with some type of funding. So making that link between Ernie's company, Eversource, and the PD, I think still gives us some opportunity later to, to save some money with Eversource participating with us. That's all I have, unless you folks have some questions.
I'm just, I want to understand how we got here in the first place. You said there was a report at the end of, when the building was commissioned that recommended doing certain things, but they weren't all done. Was it a contractor that failed on this one, or, I mean, I'm not looking to blame, I'm looking to solve the problem. But how do we not get ourselves in that situation again?
I, I can't answer that question for you and, and not do a lot of guessing at that.
I don't want to.
I can tell you that I, I went through a, a couple of sections in this report. We did give the report to Ernie's company and Ernie to look at. So he has that. His comments were what I'm translating to, which is it appears that these recommendations weren't followed through with, or some of them were, but not to completion. But that's something he's going to build off of that report. Since it was done in 2013 and I wasn't here, I don't want to speculate.
No, and I wasn't, and I'm not really, to use the old phrase, I'm not looking to find the blame, I'm looking to find the solution. I'd like to make, make sure that with a school about to be built, that we don't fall into a similar type of problem.
I, I can only relate it to what we just finished over the DPW garage. We didn't leave that building until it was commissioned, balanced, everything was good. And we had a building systems, up, a computer system up and running for that facility. Now, we've tweaked it a couple of times, but that's part of the maintenance issue now. It goes along with usage.
Okay.
You have to balance it that way. But I, I can't tell you if they did that or not.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ed or Ray? No. Okay. Thank you very much for your detailed explanation. Really appreciate it. I know that this building has been a problem since you moved into the renovated building. So I hope that this new company, SEC, can help us get to the bottom of the issues and, and find a path forward so that we don't spend another decade working on it.
I did mention to Ray, I said, I don't believe you're going to be moving from there anytime soon. So I think this was a, this is, this is the time to, to get down into it.
Do we have any financial placeholders in the budget for recommendations that might come from this?
Uh, none at this time.
Okay.
I thought that was a little, I, as I say, premature, but I, I don't even have a number that I could throw at that.
Okay. Understood. That means get ready, everybody.
Well, it's the thing is, we, we, you know, it could be, you know, what, five, three years? It could be six, you know?
Okay.
Air handling is one of the most archaic of arts.
I learned that pretty quickly.
Yeah. I mean, it's really art.
They say keep it simple. That's, that's what you have to do.
Well, we want our, our law enforcement staff to be worrying about the things they're trained to worry about, not about building problems, so looking forward to the outcome. Okay. If there are no further questions about the transfer, I'll entertain a motion to approve a $25,000 transfer from capital contingency to whatever you name the new account. Whatever Jen names.
Whatever Jen, Jen, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Susan moves. May I have a second? Mark? All those in favor? Great. All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hi, Elaine.
Okay. We have one appointment this evening. I, I do want to go back and take a point of privilege to also say, which I should have said in my report, that the Board of Selectmen is holding their final interview for the Oxford Elementary School Building Committee tomorrow evening. So we should anticipate in the very near term formally seating the building committee. We'll do that right away. We have one appointment, and that is to appoint Adele Coniff to serve as an alternate to the Pear Tree Beach Building Committee. May I have a motion to approve Adele's position?
So moved.
May I have a second? Mark? All those in favor? Great. Thank you very much, Adele, for serving. We have two sets of meeting minutes tonight, one special meeting of December 17th. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Susan, may I have a second?
Second.
Kip? All those in favor? Great. And our regular meeting minutes of December 17th?
I just saw two small errors.
Sure.
On the first page, the last paragraph, the second line, it says, she said it is considered, I believe it's you were talking, using those words, not Ms. Waters. Waters.
Which, which one?
She said, the la, last paragraph on the first page, the, the second sentence.
Oh, yes, that is, that was, yeah.
That was, Jamie said that, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the only other thing I have is that I believe on the last page, no, second to last page, page three, in the middle, we're making a motion about the suite, the suite, it's going to be a suit. Settlement of the suit, not the suite.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other corrections or additions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Kip? May I have a second?
Second.
Susan? All those in favor? Great. Thank you. Agenda review. Budget season's upon us?
Yes.
Mark?
I'd like to have a little report next time. It should be short about, I understand that we have some temporary facilities available now at Highland Field.
Not quite yet.
Oh, well, the roping, the, the.
The, one parking area has been set up temporarily. And the fence is almost complete.
Almost done.
But as of this morning, it was not yet complete.
Right.
Okay.
But once those two are in place, so maybe by the next meeting, we'll be able to tell you. But the next meeting is a joint department heads meeting, so you'll have Pam here.
Okay.
And Askew. But so it's possible that.
Because when I drove by, it looked like it was ready to go.
What I can share with you, though, is it's anticipated that on January 29th, Pam Geary, Director of Parks and Recreation, will be going before the Planning and Zoning Commission to seek some clarifications and to adjust some inconsistencies that were in the adopted resolution, so that Parks and Rec can begin their plans to program that space.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else for agenda review? Okay. Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mark? Second. Kip? All those in favor? Thank you. Great. Thank you.